Welcome to the Board of Education's June 2nd, 2025 Work Session. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Fauntler Ridley.
Face the flag. Salute. Pledge.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, just a reminder that the TSBA Summer Law Institute is being held in Gatlinburg on July 18th and 19th. Please let Terry know if you want to attend. Also, if you need to review your TSBA transcript to make sure you're meeting all of the training requirements, Terry's happy to assist you with any necessary updates you may need. And each of us received our Board Evaluations Survey from TSBA via email yesterday morning. So please remember you have until close of business on Monday, June 30th to complete that survey. Once all of the surveys have been received, TSBA will tally the results and prepare a report for our review and discussion at our annual workshop. Are there any requested changes to the agenda?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Christie. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. I'm going to kick it to Ms. Christie for a special recognition of Ms. Sophia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a lot more fun to introduce student reps than to say goodbye, I'm just going to say, so I'll try not to cry. And it's a little bittersweet, though. Sophia has been such an important part of our board, and I am so proud to have served on the selection committee that appointed Ms. Elkins. It's been an absolute pleasure to get to know you and your sweet mom and dad. And thank you for sharing her with us. And I hope that Sophia's experience as our board student representative was not only memorable but educational and inspiring as she continues into her next chapter. And I'm not sure if all of our board members are aware, I'm going to go off track a little bit, but as Sophia's final legacy, I guess, to future student reps, she did design a special graduation stole for our student board rep to wear at graduation, which we did not have anything like that for them to wear until this year. So thank you for that idea and working to get that done so we can have it in the future. And while at Hall's High School, Sophia served as captain at the Scholars Bowl when her team qualified for the national tournament. She served as captain of the Hall's varsity tennis team and was also selected for the all district team. Sophia served as a class representative for Hall Student Government Association from 2021 to 2024, and also as a small group leader, homecoming candidate, and leadership team member for FCA. She was also manager for the Hall's High School Wrestling Team, a Madrigal, an 865 Academy's ambassador, and a member of the National Honors Society. And there's more that's in school. And outside activities included work with Free Period Knox, participation in the Fountain City United Methodist Youth Choir, Beaver Dam Student Ministries, working for Knoxville Princess Parties and Magic Lamp Entertainment, performing with the Knoxville Children's Theater since 2018, and serving on the teen board of Knoxville since 2021. She spent over 100 hours serving Norwood Elementary School and Adrian Burnett Elementary Schools and the Western Heights Baptist Center in Los Angeles, California. And through mission trips, Sophia also participated in community theater for over 115 hours. Sophia graduated from Hall's High School with a 4.53 weighted GPA. She is an AP Scholar and an Excel Associate and Expert Certified. Her honors and awards include the Silent Service Award, the Kiwanis Club's Andy Hudson Service Award, Knoxville's Optimist Club's Service to Humanity Award, Accounting Award, Most Likely to Succeed, and Best All- Round Girl in her graduating class. Please join me as we recognize and congratulate our 2024-25 Board of Education Student Representative, Sophia Elkins. Are we going to do another board photo?
Yes.
And Mom and Dad, do you want to join us in the photo?
Sophia, I don't know if you sleep with all of those, with all those activities. Thank you so much. We're going to miss you. You've been a gem on the board. The year always goes by too fast, too. It's always too fast. All right, Dr. Reiswein, do you have a superintendent's report?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, let me start by saying, first of all, it has been a great year. We just celebrated 17 graduations in eight days. I had the privilege of personally shaking hands with more than 4,300 students as they walked across our stages into the next phases of their lives. Most of those were dry, a few weren't. I still tell you guys, Bearden's cursed. I don't know what it is about Bearden High School. I told Debbie Sayers it was her fault, but anyway. Board members, a lot of you were there with me. That was, that was great. All of you were there for those, and that was great. Every graduate represents an entire network of educators, mentors, and supporters, from their parents and coaches to the preschool and elementary school teachers. We begin each school year under the Friday night lights of football games, and it's fitting that we finish every year on those same fields. We talk a lot as a district about what we, what we're uniquely positioned to do in this community, and it really is to prepare every student for life after graduation. That mission continues to drive us, and our team will tell you, we're already talking about opportunities to build on this momentum for next year. The last three years have been focused on building strong systems and structures that create alignment and predictability in our work. This year was, it was exciting to see some of those systems in place. Some things I just want to recap on. Since 2022, you all as the board and as a district, we've invested more than $120 million more dollars in our people, and we're seeing results because of that. I've had conversations recently about that, people talking about shortages, and again, we're in a great place with that, and we know that our teachers make the difference. We started the school year with eight certified vacancies, and we're headed into the summer with fewer than 50 vacancies, which is incredible. We usually have been around 450. Those numbers mean more students are being in the school, are beginning the school year with a highly qualified educator in front of them, and that matters when we talk about gains in key areas like reading and math. There's no doubt that that's making the difference. We won't have our TCAPs result back for some time, but the last three years alone, the ones that we just took, our elementary reading proficiency has increased by 9% over the last three years, and our math proficiency has increased by 6%. We've seen lots of years in my 20-plus years where we've gone up and then back, up and then back. We actually haven't. We've stacked three straight years of increases in those areas. And we're seeing pockets of growth across the district that are even higher than those 6 and 9%. A few shout-outs, Fountain City Elementary's, their ELA scores have increased 20% in three years. Karnes Elementary has seen a 23% increase in their math proficiency during the same three years, and they're not the only ones. Schools like Hall's, Middle, West Valley, and Lonsdale have all made similar gains. Our focus moving forward will be on scaling the gains that we're seeing now to make sure that all schools are seeing those across the district. We're also seeing similar results in our high schools. The 865 Academies are focused on preparing students for life after graduation. We're starting to, we're tracking the EPSOs, you know what those are, Sophia, early post-secondary opportunities. Just shake your head, right? Oh, yeah. All right, perfect. See, I knew you had this. So early post-secondary opportunities, and that's things like AP dual enrollment, industry certifications, these play a huge role. We were, like we said before, we're now trying to see how many kids can show they can do that before they leave. Kind of our impact, what's the other word? I'm thinking, Corey, impact and analytics. That's a department. We changed that. So impact analytics has actually looked for a good metric to be able to say that for all of those 4,300 kids that graduated. And so we started going, how many EPSOs per kid, right? How many they were able to earn that? District-wide, our graduates had 2.9 EPSOs. That means, again, dual enrollment class, an AP class, ACT scores follow into that, too. We had a few high schools, like West High School, that had an average of four per student graduate, and Fairgate High School led with 4.4 EPSOs. and Fairgate High School led with 4.4 EPSOs under their belt. So, that's, that whole, we know we'll be successful when we graduate, which is really important. Opportunities like these, we're expanding. This is why we're expanding to IB programming in Region 5. We're continuing to focus on the work of the 865 Academies. So, next year will be a big milestone for our 865 Academies. It'll be the first year in the district that we begin their high school experiences, freshman academy, that began their school year and, I mean, their, their career in a freshman academy, and will actually be leaving with a capstone experience, which will be interesting for us. So, we'll have our first set of graduates who have gone through that. Those capstone experiences will be a chance for them to be able to prove all their industry work that they've done and/or job shadowing that they've done. It'll be a culminating project for them to do with that, so looking forward to having that last year. We obviously have a lot to celebrate as a district, but we have a lot to look forward to as well moving into next year. Special education is one of those areas. Three years ago, we, it's hard to believe it was three years ago. I did a bunch of interviews last week, and it was like, you know, we'll talk about special ed, and I was like, well, a year ago, I was like, no, wait, three years ago, we called for a special ed task force. That's crazy, but we did. And launched a deep dive into our IEP services and supports. Last month, you heard the long-awaited results of that report from PCG. Just wanna say, PCG's been great to work with, and we continue to work with them. I know Dr. Brown has done a lot of work with them as we're building this action plan. But the findings highlighted several bright spots, areas that were leading the way as a model district. But just as importantly, and maybe even more importantly, it also called out some of our challenges, identifying where we can improve to provide better service for all students. I wanna take a moment and recognize Dr. Karen Loy for her and her team for the work in the past three years. I just wanna say this, it's not easy when a superintendent comes and says, "We wanna do a deep dive into your department. I think we can do better." They, they work extremely hard to try to do that, and I appreciate the fact that they have said, "Okay, let's do it," and, and been open to that and been very cooperative for that. Continuous improvement takes time, as we've said before, will never arrive, but steps like the PCG report are major strides in the right direction. As you know, Dr. Loy is retiring at the end of the month, and I'd like to invite all of you joining me to recognize her for her years of service and dedication to the students of Knox County. We'll clap for her. We'll do that. I think she's in the other room, but we'll do that, for sure. Also, happy to say and appreciate to build on that work, Dr. Loy will be followed in her new role by Dr. Brad Carr. He's with us today, and I'm gonna ask him in a few minutes to step up and say a few words. Brad's got a really unique experience in that he's been a special education teacher, but he's also been a principal for us and actually left the district for a while and did some administrative work at the district office in a district in West Virginia. So, brings a really fresh perspective. So, he's joining us at a pivotal moment in our special education work. The research is done, the reporting is done. Now, it's time for us to build this plan for implementation. I'm confident Dr. McCarr is well-positioned to lead this work. He understands that our biggest challenge is getting that decision-making closer to the classroom, closer to the principals and the school. And I think because he's come off a successful implementation at South Hill High School for the last two years of our 865 Academies, he's a proven leader who gets it done. I've known Brad for a long time, and he doesn't, he doesn't say a lot, but his actions speak a whole lot for what he gets done, and we appreciate that. So, I think he'll bring a unique perspective of where maybe there's some rub points that we can improve quickly. So, in a moment, I'll have him come up and speak. Okay, yeah, sorry, I was supposed to read this part. In just a moment, I'll have Dr. Carr speak. But before I do that, I wanna thank our educators, staff members, and families for their work and dedication in this past year. The progress I just reported wouldn't be possible without our talent, without the determination and focus that I get to go see weekly in our schools. I wanna encourage everyone to take some time off and relax for the summer, telling our team that same thing, and telling all the folks out there, six weeks go fast. So, so start gearing down now and make sure that you're doing that. I also wanna take a second before we end to recognize my friend, Ms. Paula Hancock. And for her years of service as a KCEA president, board meetings are not gonna be the same without you sitting in the front row in your seat. And Paula, it was good for me just to take a minute and really just reflect on all we've accomplished in three years. And you've been right there through the whole thing. If it's the, the compensation, working through that, and, and, you know, we hadn't done that before. And, and from your seat, that was a big risk to take, but you trusted in what we were trying to do, and I think all of our educators are benefiting because of that. You've been a tremendous advocate for our teachers and for our students and for our public school system. And I just wanna say publicly, I appreciate your friendship, and you will be missed. The work will continue on, and, and we're excited about that. But I also wanted to take a moment and just thank you for your work and your partnership. Let's clap for you, too. Standing ovation wasn't enough, Paula. We had to do a wave. So, thank you for the opportunity to share these highlights, Madam Chair. And at this time, if I could, if I'd like to invite Dr. Brad Carr up to say a few words, and then we'll turn it back over to you.
Welcome. We're excited that you're here and the work that you're gonna dive into.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Rieswick.
You can, yeah, you can, there's a button.
Where?
Yeah, and the whole podium will lift up for you.
It'll take a minute. All right, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Rieswick, I appreciate you having me here tonight. Like Dr. Rieswick said, I'm Brad Carr. I'm the incoming Executive Director of Special Education. I'm a product of Knox County Schools, graduate of South Hill High School, so I'm a little sad to leave my alma mater in South Knoxville, but I'm excited for the work that we've done there, and Mr. Rocky Riley's gonna take over and do a great job. I've had an opportunity over the past two weeks to dive into the PCG report, spend some time with personnel from PCG, spend time with our staff here, with Dr. Loy, and I'm excited for the month of June to kind of transition in and get ready to start in July. So, again, thank you for having me. I'm excited to get started.
Thank you. We're excited for you. That is very tall, by the way, that podium.
I'll put it back.
Didn't even know it went that high. Mr. Trip.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a couple of things for, related to legislative update. Public chapters from the legislation approved during the 114th General Assembly are now available. TOS, TSBA, Tennessee Department of Education, State Board of Education are all beginning to interpret those things and figure out what was passed and what that actually means for us. And KCS staff, Knox County Law Department is going to be taking those interpretations and figuring out what that looks like in policy. So, the plan is for us to probably have another policy review meeting at the end of this month, if we can figure out the schedule. So, I think Terry's gonna send out an email sometime shortly and see if we can't get everybody on the same page and have a, another policy review so we can work through some of those changes and get them addressed before the next school year starts.
That sounds good. Thank you. Thank you, Terry, for doing that. All right, I'm gonna kick it back to Ms. Christie. She's going to open us up for our strategic plan presentation. I'm excited about the work that's been, that's been going on.
I, I am as well. And just briefly, and my notes are kind of all over the place here. Just as every, just to speak to the purpose and the reasoning for the strategic plan. You know, not only is it a good practice that Tennessee school districts are required to create five-year strategic plans as part of their ongoing school improvement efforts by developing specific goals for improving student performance. And our committee believes that the plan being proposed is an excellent roadmap to guide district decision-making, inform budget development, and evaluate program effectiveness. And just a little bit on my perspective in working on this, and I do appreciate you, Ms. Henderson and Reverend Butler, for all of your work and conversations that we've had over the past several months. And I know Dr. Reiswick talks a lot when we talk about 865, about making big small, but I think this kind of goes the opposite direction. And all of our schools have school improvement plans. We know we have very different schools across Knox County. We have very different communities. And one of the discussions we had early on is how do you reconcile all those differences into a document that can reflect something everyone can see their communities, their children, their schools in. And so, this is kind of that overview, and it builds on the priorities that Dr. Reiswick has set. It is not unlike the Region 5 Strategic Plan in going on those four priorities as well. And, but just would like to speak to, there are a lot of other things that happen in smaller groups across the district, like those individual school safety plans and those individual, um, school improvement plans. You wouldn't want Bonnie Kate to write a school improvement plan for Dogwood or vice versa because they're very different schools. So, I do feel like this document is a good way of capturing just the larger view of, of what we do and what we want to do. And basically, that's pretty much all I have on, at this time. But I don't know if you or Reverend Butler have anything you would like to add or say? No? All right, so I guess, is it Jenny here with Accenture to kick off the?
I was thinking earlier, I'm like, you're gonna have to lower that.
All right, can you hear me okay? Hi, everyone. I'm Jenny Brinkman with Accenture. I see lots of familiar faces today. First, before I jump in, we wanted to say thank you for allowing us to partner with you on this great initiative. We've had a great time working with Knox County Schools and look forward to presenting the plan to you today. So, what I'm gonna do is give you a bit of overview of what to expect when you see the document. And then, we're gonna have Corey deep-dive a little bit into the specifics. So, if we don't mind going to the next slide. Oh, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna go over a little bit about the guiding principles that really set the vision for how everyone was gonna work together to create the plan for 2030. Go a little bit over the planning process, what it all entailed, all of the interaction along the way, your new mission and vision, and the goals and objectives, and then we'll deep-dive into how the goals are gonna go into action. So, when we met with the Strategic Planning Committee at the very beginning of this effort, we wanted to make sure we had, what are our guiding principles that are gonna result in your strategic plan? Knowing that this, this district is large, and there's gonna be conflicting viewpoints and opinions. And so, one of the key points that the committee set is how are we gonna work together? Remaining respectful, open-minded, all working towards the common goal for Knox County Schools. Being honest and willing to have those hard conversations where it's necessary, and then making sure we stay grounded in the input that we receive from the stakeholders and the expert feedback along the way. So, when we started the strategic planning process, we kicked off with you all engaged with Milan, Chicago, to do an extensive stakeholder engagement. There was great insight that came from that, that we made sure we maintained a focus on during the planning process. Then, we, this past fall, we held an organizational visioning workshop with you all where we came up with a new vision and mission for Knox County Schools over the next five years. After that, we conducted numerous discovery interviews with staff, with teachers, all across, just to hear directly of what are the strengths and the opportunities that the district needs to be focused on over the next five years. We then hosted a series of strategic planning workshops, first with district leaders, and then we met with the regional leaders to really understand what were the long-range goals and objectives that need to feed into this plan. We came back, we synthesized all the inputs that we received, including everything from that Phase 1 Milan study to come up with this draft of this plan that we're presenting to you tonight. There was some validation that occurred, resident test, residence testing that occurred and was very well-received, and we'll go over that a little bit detail here in a few minutes with resulting today, the adoption of the new plan. All right, so without further ado, your mission. So, as we mentioned at that visioning workshop, we worked together of what is, why are we here? Why does Knox County Schools exist? And what you're gonna see is, is ultimately, your new mission is to prepare students for life by providing a high-quality education that is accessible, meaningful, and future-focused. Now, we found, as we've helped, we've helped organizations across the world, is it's always helped to contextualize. What do we mean by these words? And what you're gonna see is what we heard from you all during that visioning workshop. When we said "high-quality education," it means providing access to evidence-based materials and best-in-class teachers. There was meaning behind accessibility that was very important to you all, that it's inclusive and accessible to all students. Meaningful, meaning you wanna create an environment that focuses on the individual, their student's aptitudes and their goals. And the future focus in terms of preparing them for that lifelong success and contributing to the future of Knox County. So, your new mission will be the guiding force for you all going over the next five years. The vision is where you want to go. And what we heard loud and clear is that you wanna be the cornerstone of education in Knox County, empowering students to grow their talents, their skills, and their talent, strengths, and skills to build a stronger community. And some of that context we heard from you all was very important. You wanted to be the choice provider of quality education in Knox County. You wanna equip students with meaningful and intentional opportunities to explore their aptitudes and goals. And again, you wanted to prepare that future generation to contribute and invest in their community, whether it's Knox County or elsewhere. So, applaud you all. That was a, a long day. We had lots of great dialogue, but we hope that you see what you told us is, is evident here in this mission and vision. So, the, the plan is along five main overarching goals. You'll see, you'll notice the first four are grounded in your priorities with the fifth domain around community engagement. So, goal number one around excellence and foundational skills is your goal that you want to reach is that students will be regionally and nationally competitive in both reading and math proficiency. Now, I'm not gonna drain the objectives because Corey here in a few minutes is going to talk a little bit more in-depth, but we wanted to give you at a, at a glance, here are your goals for the, for the overarching district. Goal number two around great educators in every school is that every educator will be equipped with consistent resources, training, and support to enhance instructors, instruction. Goal number three, that is embedded in priority around career empowerment and preparation, is that your students will feel confident in their plans for life after graduation by eighth grade and be graduate-ready for enrollment, enlistment, or employment, the three Es. Goal number four was around success for every student. You wanted to make sure every classroom will be equipped with state-of-the-art, evidence-based strategies to accelerate student learning. And then, as I mentioned, the fifth domain that was added was around communication and engagement. And this was added because there was significant feedback during the stakeholder engagement portion of this process that really said, this is something that this, that Knox County Schools needs to lean into around communication and engagement. And that is that KCS will meaningfully and intentionally engage and communicate with stakeholders to enhance the student experience. And we'll go into depth a little bit about what that looks like. Now, I'm gonna pause there. Any questions about the planning process, the goals at large that we, you would like to ask, or any comments?
Just for clarification on career three, I think you misspoke. You said eighth grade. It should be 11th grade.
My apologies. Well, you don't want them, you don't want them graduate-ready by eighth grade? That's a 10-year shoot. Great. Thanks for that catch. All right. So, I'm gonna kick it over to Corey to talk a little bit about how I'm gonna take these goals into action. Thank you very much.
All right, so to kick us off, I am going to take a quick look at a framework we've had for a while, but a fresh look at that framework. So, this is something that we adopted, should look relatively familiar to those who have been with us for a while, about three years ago, specifically to break down how that annual action plan was converted into operational goals at every level across the district, for every department, for every classroom, for every school, so that, you know, we were living and breathing from the same roadmap and doing the same work, all kind of moving in the same direction. And so, when we think about the five-year strategic plan, we really had an opportunity already embedded within the district in the form of the strategic planning framework to do something very unique and very innovative with the strategic plan. Not every district has a framework that is this robust, and it's given us an opportunity to think a little bit differently about how we design our strategic plan, specifically at the intersection between the five-year strategic plan and the annual action plan itself. And so, for the sake of time, I'm just gonna go ahead and dive right in, but you all slow me down if we're moving too quickly. So, you all have lived with us for a few years now. You've seen the annual action plan. Many of you were part of the board that devised the annual action plan as a process within our district for just maintaining goals and checking in and reporting out on those goals on an annual basis. And so, I wanna take a moment just to level-set on what that's gonna look like within the con- within the context of the strategic plan itself and what that's going to enable us to do as a district. So if you look at the screen or at the documents in front of you, you can also find this in the strategic plan itself. So if you're flipping through the booklet, I'm on page eighteen, nineteen in the booklet. But the top image here is a snapshot from the proposed strategic plan. And so you'll see an objective, just one objective, and some elements of that objective and how they will pull down from the strategic plan into a hypothetical annual action plan. So we don't have an annual action plan yet that's been devised based on this strategic plan because we'll be building that in the fall. That's something we'll build annually based on the data that we've received coming out of the previous year's TCAP, looking at kind of our staffing numbers and all of the data that is made available to us each summer. That's when we really start building that annual action plan. So again, this one is a theoretical glimpse of an annual action plan, but it's built to give you an idea of how this would potentially work in practice for staff and from an implementation standpoint. So if you look at the objective there, increase third-grade reading proficiency year over year. What you're going to see is consistency from the strategic plan into the annual action plan in the form of those objectives. Those will pull down directly, word for word. The objectives in the strategic plan will be our proposed objectives for the next five years in our annual action plan. Where we then kind of differentiate and we really start to make that plan feel relevant, feel living, give it a chance to breathe, pull it off the shelf, and we use it year over year, month over month, is in the form of those annual actions. So under those objectives, you will see a breakdown of very specific actions that staff would be prepared to engage in and would propose to the board for approval each fall to meet the objectives, move the needle toward those established objectives in the strategic plan. So here you can see, we've outlined in the strategic plan in that top section, some high-level actions we would be prepared to engage in over the next five years. Implementation of a three-year strategic plan to enhance literacy outcomes. That's not gonna pull down word for word into the annual action plan. We're gonna make it bite-sized, we're gonna make it meaningful year over year. So that'll look like a very specific measurable target. And that measurable target here, we're hypothesizing it looks something like increase third-grade reading proficiency by 1.8%. And so I'll pause there for a second because this is very, very different. And ask you all to imagine any strategic plan you've ever seen. Normally, it has a really large table, it's very meaty, it's very dense, you've got a row of objectives, you have columns for every single year, and it's a little bit of an exercise in fortune-telling, right? You're trying to devise what's going to be true for the next five years and hope you're very, very right. We know no human being is that good. We might be close, but we are not that good as people, right? Things change, sometimes we outpace ourselves and we perform even better than we anticipated. When that happens, we don't wanna rest on our laurels. We don't want to have set a bar too low and say, okay, we've accomplished that goal, we'll just move on to something else. If and when we accomplish our goals for ourselves, we want to have a vehicle by which we can set a new, more ambitious goal every single year. If something were to happen that was unforeseeable, COVID-19 is a recent example, that requires us to adjust course and kind of adapt along the way. We also wanted a system, and this was very important to the Strategic Planning Committee, that we had a system or a mechanism by which we could still make those nimble changes, those nimble exchanges along the way while remaining true to you and coherent with the proposed strategic plan. And so that's where you're gonna see those actions changing year over year. You'll also see when we start talking about the literacy landscape analysis or implementing that, you know, three-year strategic plan in literacy, that's our opportunity to say, we're going to do that and we're going to implement our year-one metrics. So we're referencing other plans. This will be really important when we start thinking about the fact that we have a Region Five strategic plan. The eight-six-five academies has their own plan, Teach Knox has their own plan. And that's something you heard from Ms. Christie that we worked hand-in-hand with Accenture with and with the board committee, just to make sure that this plan was capable of being an umbrella that sheltered and represented all of the work currently taking place across the district. And so this interchange is exactly where you're going to see how we make those plans real and relevant year over year, from staff member to staff member, from school to school. And so that's probably the most I've ever talked about, a process on a slide. It's not the most exciting thing in the world, but really, this could be a game-changer for us in thinking about how we take a strategic plan and honestly, a tool that's usually shelved and collects dust within months of having been created. And we force it into like our living usage every single day. And this is how that's going to really help us play out and practice what we've put to paper already in the strategic plan. So any questions about that before we get into the objectives Jenny referenced and the work that the committee has done? All right.
I do have one question.
Yes.
So I, you know, as I look at some of these objectives and maybe just in general, I assume that the annual action plan will give us some good, like some of these don't seem real measurable. Some of them seem really measurable and really easy to go, ah, we've achieved that. But like, 1C doesn't seem all that measurable to me in its current form. But I would assume that the annual action plan will give us something to go, we've actually succeeded in that. Like collaborating on something doesn't seem like a success, you know? It's like, well, we talked about it for a long time and that was really great. But, you know, like that'll turn into an annual action plan that'll give us a measurable where we can say, we did move the needle on this and make that happen.
Yes, so what you'll get in the annual action plan is what you've received in prior annual action plans. So you'll have one of two types of actions in that plan. You'll either have a measurable objective and it'll be quantifiable, like that increase of 1.8%. We'll be able to measure, we'll be able to tie that back to something and say, either we met the mark or we didn't, right? Maybe we fell just short, but we still increased, maybe we exceeded that goal. Or you may have milestone objectives or actions in the annual action plan as well. What that's going to look like is a very specific action that would have a very specific report out on, yes, we accomplished that goal, or no, we did not. And it would not be something along the lines of, we collaborated, right? It would be, we produced this protocol out of the collaboration that was conducted. Or we created, you know, this process out of the collaboration that was performed. So you'll have something very tangible, very physical to hold on to and something to keep in mind, too. And I do think this is just a nod in kind of the board's direction in having the foresight to create a process like this. We'll also have an annual opportunity at the board's retreat to propose those milestone and measurable actions to you all. So you have an annual opportunity to push back and say, that's not specific enough, that's not ambitious enough. Or have you considered adding or picking this up, you know, along the way in fulfillment of this objective? So we'll have kind of that annual compact in exchange with one another, too, to make sure that we're not only remaining current and relevant, but that we're also pushing the envelope and challenging ourselves to the extent that you all want us to be as well.
If I could just add, I just thought of an example. So I was thinking like the whole child support teams, like the initial part of the annual action plan, we put establish those, right? But I think in then future years, we go, well, what was that built to increase or decrease? So if it was like increase attendance rates or decrease discipline rates, like so. Like sometimes there will be an action to establish PLCs, right? The professional learning communities in every school. Then in out-years, we'll say to, you know, raise practice or raise this in an English classroom or that. So sometimes there are some acts we have to do to get them put in that's not gonna have a measure. It's more of a check you did or you didn't. But out of that, in future years, there should be a number we're chasing to try to get to.
And along the way, ideally a physical byproduct to you. So, and that's a lot of what's being reported out on in the annual report as well. So if it's more process-oriented, you may get a report on the process that was built or the way that it's being implemented so that we can, over time, prepare ourselves and our community for being ready to measure those outcomes in a more quantifiable way. All right, so now we can get into the plan itself. And so Jenny did a great job just going through those five very lofty, very ambitious goals that were set, you know, really by the community, by those of you who participated in the interviews with Accenture and the sessions with Milan, that those months of engagement really culminated in these next five slides. And so before we get into the content of the slide, there is a lot going on here and I'm not gonna cover every word on the slide, so I want you to know what you're looking at as I'm tabbing through. In the upper right-hand corner on every single one of these slides, you'll see the goal that correlates with that priority. That's that five-year goal. Under each goal, you'll also see three objectives. So every goal has three objectives. In the booklet that's in front of you, you'll see some supporting language. This was feedback we received from the community, just wanting a little bit more context around what those objectives mean in practice, why that's important. So you'll find that language and those explanations available in the booklet. Didn't have room on the slide, didn't wanna clutter this up too much, but it is in the plan itself. And then you'll see under each objective, three key actions that staff is prepared to engage in in fulfillment of that objective and the ultimate fulfillment of the proposed goal that's present there. These actions are by no means comprehensive. It does not mean that we're only going to do, you know, the actions and engage in the actions that are identified here. What this is intended to do is showcase what that work will consist of and what it will take over the course of the next five years to really move the needle and meet these objectives that are established here. You'll also notice above each goal and above each objective, there's a colored bar with a percent favorability. So this was something, I see Ms. Anderson nodding, this was something that was extremely important to the board committee as we were building out the scope and sequence with Accenture and with Milan of the overall strategic plan, not just that we engage with our stakeholders once, right? And that's pretty common when you think about strategic planning, to go out and do a battery of stakeholder engagement, to put out the focus groups, to put out the surveys, to ask the interview questions, and really to figure out what folks want to be true for the district over the course of the next five years. That was done, it was done comprehensively, and we are immensely appreciative of the work that Accenture did and that Milan did before then. But in addition to that work, the committee challenged us to go back to the community for a validation period and ask whether or not we got it right. Did we hit the mark with the objectives and with the goals that were proposed? Did they resonate with the folks who were reading them? And so what you see on the screen is one of the ways in which we engaged with the community to ask that questions. We put out a stakeholder engagement survey, it was open to students, it was open to families, it was open to community members, and it was open to our staff. We provided a snapshot of every single goal and every single objective and we asked folks to rate them. Either not at all important, somewhat important, neutral, I don't feel one way or another, that the goal was important, or that the goal was very important. And that favorability score that you've got there, that favorability percentage reflects the number, the percent of respondents who said that that goal or that objective was either important or very important. I will be honest, when we did this, we were anticipating, you know, seventies, eighties as being a really good marker of, we're probably moving in the right direction. We did not anticipate high eighties, high nineties. And so you'll see that across the board, just in terms of the responses that we received from the community at large. I will also add, because you have this in your booklet, it's not going to be on the screen, that prior to even doing the survey, we took the goals to our regional teacher councils and our regional family councils and we asked that preliminary question, are we moving in the right direction? Should we scrap these and start over? Do we absolutely have to make sure that these are the goals within the strategic plan across the board, across all five regions? The answer was yes, these were the right goals. And we doubled down with those councils early on and we said, okay, if those are the right goals, help us contextualize what they need to look like in practice, what needs to be true over the next five years for us to accomplish this work. And you'll see a reflection of their input in two places. You'll see some of their quotes throughout the plan itself in your booklet. And then you will also see a reflection of their input in these high-level key actions that are reflected in the plan itself. So that is a tour of the screen. Now, the content that's actually on it, and I'll go pretty quickly because we do have five of these, you'll see that the goal for excellence in foundational skills, Jenny's already shared it with us, is for our students to be regionally and nationally competitive in reading and math. The objectives 1A and 1B should look very, very similar to the board. This has been our work for the past couple of years. This is the work of, you know, a strong foundational school district of making sure that these key benchmarks in a student's academic career are met, that reading by third grade and proficiency in math by eighth grade. And so you'll see some of the ways in which we intend to engage in that work over the course of the next couple of years. The third one is one that I do want to call out, especially because Mr. Triplet lifted it up just a moment ago and say to me, you know, as we're thinking about what we're excited about in the framework of the five-year strategic plan and having worked with the vendors that we've worked with and looking at the product that we've received, I think everyone's hope is that you land with a product that makes you excited, but also a little bit nervous. And 1C is a really good example of work that is very exciting, but it's also a little bit nerve-wracking because it is very, very hard work. And so this is something we heard from every single stakeholder across the board, whether it was a student representative or a family representative, a staff representative or a community representative, that there are inconsistencies from school to school in academic expectations and behavioral expectations in the way we implement our practices and our protocols as a district. And sometimes it makes it tough to engage with us. You've already heard from Dr. Brown, you've heard from Dr. Wilson just about the work that they're already beginning to do to collaborate between special education and general education and how important that integrated functionality and collaboration is and how messy it can be sometimes. So this is gonna be deep and dense work, it's gonna take us a while, but the goal is for our families and for our staff to have a more predictable, more consistent experience on the backend of this work. So this one's incredibly exciting, I think, for the district at large and for our stakeholders as well. All right, great educators in every school. So the goal there, we've already heard that from Jenny as well, equipping our educators consistently with resources, training, and support to enhance instruction. You'll see, again, some familiar work lifted up in the form of the Teach Knox Initiative, some of the work we've already shared about wanting to be more intentional in our professional development space, really thinking about what it means to develop our leaders and our classroom leaders, our school and our classroom leaders in a way that is meaningful to them, that kind of meets and recognizes the point in which they're at in their professional trajectory and what it is, you know, and is responsive to what it is, we're hearing from our folks that they need to be successful in their craft as well. 2C is another one that is particularly exciting. And the favorability score there reflects the fact that, you know, we're not entirely sure yet exactly what that needs to look like and sound like as a district. But I'm thinking back to the policy review meeting we all had not too long ago, talking about, you know, the new wellness policy and the fact that recess is important for kids, instruction is important for kids. It all takes up time, instructional minutes are a resource and they are finite. And time is just something that is very, very limited. And so looking at how we can leverage automation, technology, and just some common sense innovations to give time back to our educators in meaningful ways. So they're not slogging through emails, looking for resources and links that we can very quickly embed somewhere in a one-stop-shop for them to access and move on without having to, you know, really expend their lunch, their twenty minutes of lunch, right? Thirty minutes of lunch, searching for resources because we've not organized those in a responsive way. And so just little improvements like that that could yield a big impact for our educators in giving time back in their lives is one example of where we might go in this space. I think the sky's the limit there, and we're very much in the forefront of imagining what that work could look like over the course of the next five years under that objective. Career empowerment and preparation, this is really kind of recognizing the culmination of the intent and the vision that is the eight-six-five academies, that every student is going to graduate ready for enrollment or enlistment or employment. And they'll indicate that readiness by being able to express confidence in their choices by eleventh grade. You can see in objectives 3A and 3B, a continuation and a deepening of the work in the eight-six-five academy space, specifically in asking the question of whether or not our pathways in our academies are fully aligned to provide the richness of an experience and the intentionality in those experiences that students need to enter the workforce, enter the post-secondary environment, and thrive based on the experiences and the knowledge and the opportunities that they've had during their high school years. Looking ahead at objective 3C, this one is particularly exciting. We talked about this a lot within the board committee and just identifying the fact that every learner is different. And we've seen tremendous success with Ellen and STEM Academy, with CMA, with our magnet programs and offering students something that is unique to them and something that is enriching to, you know, a student population that may not be enriching to another student population and giving students choice to explore those unique interests in a very innovative and through a very innovative lens and wanting to expand that across the district. We have a real opportunity to capitalize in doing that work with the new K-8 coming on board and the MLB community. And that'll be a really great example of how we can dream a little bit as a community and imagine what we want to do with those spaces when we've got time and we've got the availability of, the spatial availability, to think and dream a little bit about what we want to do with that space. And I'm going kind of quickly, so slow me down if I'm going too quickly, but we're very close to the end. Under success for every student, you know, this goal of equipping our classrooms with state-of-the-art, evidence-based strategies to accelerate student learning and thinking about that in a couple of different ways here, right? So under objective 4A, thinking about the fact that we haven't fully defined the role of every single grade band. We did a lot of work three, four years ago to reimagine high schools and to really build a framework that sets our students up for success. We've pushed in a lot under Dr. Phillips and her team in building those foundational skills in the elementary school space and making sure that every student has the best possible start. But we haven't really defined those middle years. And they're a critical bridge from elementary school to high school. And they're a critical bridge from elementary school to high school, and the difference in capitalizing on the foundation that was built in elementary school to the realization of the opportunities that are going to be offered in that high school space. And so really zeroing in on middle schools and looking at, what does it need to be, what do we need to have present to build a very resilient bridge for our students from point A to point B, ideally with a safety net beneath it too, to make sure that every student is able to enter high school as their best selves, or is able to enter middle school as their best selves, if we think down to the elementary school level as well. If you look at 4B and 4C, these should look and feel very similar to what you've already seen in prior year's annual action plans, and looking at the student subgroups that we are looking at on a daily basis, and how we are providing intentional academic interventions and supports to bridge achievement gaps in our academic spaces, and also to help resource students in our classroom spaces, address any behavioral concerns in a way that is intentional, is meaningful, and return students to the learning environment as quickly and as seamlessly as possible. Something that I will call out and highlight in particular is that under objective 4B, you will also see a new reference to the implementation of that strategic plan for special education. We have not had that previously, and so this will be another exciting opportunity to lift up and embed that work that's coming out of what Dr. Brown and Dr. Carr will be working on with PCG to develop the framework for continuous improvement in special education over the course of the next five years as well. And finally, communication and engagement. This is a new domain for us in thinking about the strategic plan, but it's not new work for us. So as we look at these three objectives, the first two really focus on engagement. The first, engaging with our families. The second, engaging with our community representatives, something we heard again and again, both from our regional family council and also from the family participants in the survey, is that, you know, the world has changed, right? We have students who live in single-parent working homes, we have students that live in two-parent working homes, we have students that are growing up with grandma and grandpa and aunt and uncle, and that availability of engaging at the school, physically at the school, is sometimes a luxury, and really rethinking and reimagining what it means to engage in your students' educational experience, making sure that we're equipping families with the resources they need to actually leverage the technology that's at their disposal, how they're using Canvas, how they're using Aspen, to be included in their students' educational process, making sure we're streamlining our parent square messages, so they're getting the most important information in a seamless and systematic way. Those were just some of the things we heard from families again and again and again about process improvements we can implement to make sure families feel more included and are more included in the educational process. 5B, continuing to work with those partners that really help wrap around us and create that village and that ecosystem in which we will be capable of thriving, because we know we can't do this work alone. And finally, as we look at 5C, just recognizing the fact that this plan is only as good as our implementation, and you only know whether or not we've implemented if we're reporting, right? And so that promise and that commitment to the community to, in every single way, be bringing a proactive communication stream back to the community to say, this worked, this didn't, here's what we're going to do next year, and just having that honest, transparent conversation around the work that we're engaging in with taxpayer dollars and on behalf of the students of Knox County and the families of Knox County. And so again, that was a very, very quick sprint, but I want to thank Milan for embedding this really phenomenal slide in the presentation, because I do think that it captures just how heartfelt and appreciative the entire KCS team has been, that the board, you know, took this approach to strategic planning, that we were able to work with two vendors over the course of the past year, Milan Chicago and Accenture, to do some very meaningful, very, very deep and intentional work, and also thanking all the families, all the students, all our staff members and community members, who took time to participate repeatedly in this process, our regional family councils, our 865 Academy Steering Committee for engaging and helping vetting some of that work and ensuring that we were on the right track, helping make our, you know, proposal just as meaningful as it possibly could be, and saying thank you to the board, especially the committee for the leadership and the direction that was cast to get us to this point. It's been a very enjoyable process, and really appreciate the opportunity, from a staff perspective, to have some very challenging, very ambitious goals set for us, and to be able to think about what this will mean for the next five years for students and families. So that's our thank you that we'd like to end on. We do have an opportunity to switch over into Q and A. I'll probably pull Jenny, just so we can distribute the mics as broadly as possible. I know the committee members already have mics. I'll move back to my seat, and we can bring Jenny back up here if you all have any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Cory. Does anybody have any questions? The presentation, thoughts? Ms. Christie?
I would just like to add the, my appreciation for Cory and Steve Rutter for all their heavy lifting and work on this project. I know it was a significant time commitment and a lot of heavy lifting behind the scenes, and we don't often recognize the work that goes on behind the committees, and just as far as organizing and pulling everything together. So I do appreciate all of the work you've all put in.
I echo that. I appreciate the committee and all the work that Cory and Steve and Jenny and the whole team has done. Reverend Butler, I saw you pulling that mic down.
I just wanted to say I second that emotion.
I love that. One thing we did see out of this work is this new strategic plan makes it necessary to revise the superintendent's evaluation tool, because that superintendent evaluations tool falls under the strategic plan. So because we will have a new strategic plan, we have to revise that. So I have asked the committee to stay on, to take on that second portion of that work. So that work will be done in the next few months, and then we'll bring that new tool to the board, oh goodness, August, September, sometime late summer, early fall, we'll bring that to the whole board to vote on as well. So I just wanted to highlight that portion of the work. And we work so well together, we're like, let's just stay on and keep doing some more work. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you so much, Jenny, for being here.
Thank you.
We really appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
We will move into our regular session agenda. All right. We've already gone over item five, so 6C, does anybody have any questions about that? You did get a board update on this item, but if anybody has any more questions, let us know. All right. Leaving on then to items and contracts, D, 1 or 2? 3 or 4? 5 or 6? 7 or 8? 9 or 10? Or 11? 12 or 13? 14 or 15? 16 or 17? All right, then, moving on to board policies, A or B? C or D? A or F? G or H? I, J, or K? I like the whole alphabet. Reverend Butler?
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair, I'd like to go back to, to I, please.
Okay. So senior classification?
Yes. I still have some concerns. After attending graduations and seeing the significance to those communities that I attended, I realize that having uniformity throughout the whole district is important. But I still think that there is room for both, although I don't think everybody will agree with me, so I'm not asking for that change. But I do think that when we're looking at percentages, we're still leaving some students out who've done very, very well. And as I was looking at this at the college level, my understanding is, is that they look at the GPA as the deciding factor of what category they're in, and not at the percentage of the class. So it's almost like we're going in the middle. We decided that we didn't want to do the top two or the top three, we decided we'd do a percentage, but you're still leaving out people who accomplished high academic success. So my question would be, would it be better to look at the level being the level, whether it's a GPA of 4.5, or 4.2, or 3.9, so that all the students in this school who achieve those certain levels would be recognized with that classification versus it being a percentage of the kids in the school? And then also, that might open up a category that is significant. And then I'm going to ask Mr. Dupla to talk about those three classifications that he had mentioned at the, I think, the policy review. You mentioned three?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Reverend Butler. Yeah, well, yeah, policy review, you had, Reverend Butler, you had talked about, you know, still being able to reward some of the highest achievers in the class, and certainly the traditional, you know, application of the Latin system with three levels instead of just two would allow for, you know, that additional recognition as far as, you know, creating, you know, a percentage, whether it's 1, 2, 3%, somewhere in that neighborhood of having someone, you know, on a higher level, without saying valedictorian and salutatorian. So I mean, you know, so that was talked about, and that is an option. You know, as far as the GPA, I know that Dr. Wilson and I talked about that, and, you know, if the board wants to consider that, I mean, we can, but I believe the percentages were chosen because that's what fits the district the best as far as across the board, and, you know, not having, you know, possibly, you know, some very different numbers from one school to the next, instead of having that, just using percentages. So that was the thought process I know behind that portion of it.
Yeah, and I think one of the concerns about was the smaller schools and larger schools may differ, but if there is a uniformity across the district of there being, GPA is what qualifies you versus, for example, you can have a number of kids who have very closely related GPAs just by percentage points, and because of the number in your class, someone, you score at 4.1, 3, 4.12, 4.11, and because of percentage, if you score just 4.10, you don't fall into that, but if 4.1 is that level, then all the kids who score that level will be there. I don't see how that, if that's going to be the case, that we want all the kids who make a certain level of GPA to be identified, to me, that's the fairest way to do it versus doing it by percentage, because if you do it by percentage, somebody's going to be left out. If you do it by the GPA, you all what your score.
I think, I'm going to let Dr. Wilson jump in, and then, real fast.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Butler, the only thing I would add in terms of that, in going back to the original proposal, when we discussed in policy review the first time, when principals brought the proposal, we were using GPA as a driver. And Mr. Dupla and I did talk through different scenarios with that. I think one of the things to keep in mind, as you've mentioned with the small schools and large schools, and that data is available, you do get different distributions when you start to look at the total GPA. So when you set a GPA metric for the whole district, which is kind of where they went for the original proposal, what will happen when that is, just by sheer distribution of those, of that number, a very large high school can have, you know, 150 students that might fall above, like all those categories that we talked about that would be recognized, while across town, that might be 10 students that would fall above, maybe an exaggeration. But that number and that prediction can vary greatly, I think, in terms of that, and the concern was to set the GPA markers in a way that would ensure there was equitable representation across all high schools, would ultimately end up recognizing such a large number in some high schools that it could potentially lose meaning in terms of the students that they're recognizing. So again, I know our goal here is to recognize more, but in terms of trying to set a standard that we felt like was fair to all high schools, and the variation across total GPAs and those sorts of things was one of the reasons we talked about using the percentages and that being more of a predictable cut and predictable grouping as we looked at students that would be included. To your points on the GPAs, I mean, no matter where, on how we would calculate percentages, no matter where you cut, there's a cut line, right, in terms of how you do that. So if we were talking percentages and students, I think we currently calculate valedictorian, salutatorian, out to that hundredth of a decimal point. I would assume we would follow that same pattern as we think about the equalization and looking at GPAs and those sorts of things. So students that would fall in that top, you know, 10% according to that equalization formula would be recognized in that, and that would be no different than how we set for valedictorian and salutatorian now, to say, you know, we have very close cuts that happen there, and the same thing would be true at those levels now.
Go ahead.
Well, not to belabor the point, because as I say, I think here we're just seeing how close we're going to cut, but the discussion was about having those kids who would not have to feel like they're in a competition with someone else. So if you're going to set it up on percentages, you're still having that competition to fall in that percent. And if you look at large schools versus smaller schools, if you're going to have percentages, the larger the school, the more students you're going to have in that category, the smaller the school, the less students you have, just based on the math. If you have it based on a GPA, it's a student competing against themselves. Doesn't matter what anybody else does, if it's 4.0, it's 4.0. And so it doesn't matter what someone else does, as long as I do 4.0, I'm going to be in that classification, whereas percentage-wise, you still have that competition. And that's one of the reasons, one of the reasons I heard more than one person talk about this being something that we didn't want to have the valedictorian or salutatorian. And I'm saying, if you're going to still keep it as that competitive group, then go ahead and have the other two. That's why I say why not have both.
Thank you. Mr. Triplet?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One, I know you mentioned, you know, the three divisions. There's no legal basis for that, there's not like a law, you're just from opinion and experience, is that correct? That was brought up, I just want to make sure there wasn't some background that matters.
I know of no legal particular law that requires either one of these.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't, sometimes when you offer an opinion, it's not yours, it's truly a legal thing, I just want to make sure that was fair. The other thing is, I'm a little bit of a fan of competition, just because I do in some ways feel like life works that way, you know? I don't want to make everything about competition, I understand the pressure to be a valedictorian, salutatorian, changing the class. changing the class you choose and the take to get the better grade so you can increase that and win that. I want to be careful with some of that. But also, you know, the reality of life is that there are a top 5% and they are, frankly, they have a better grade. And I love the fact that we recognize the best of the best. And they are competing against other people. That's just the nature of life. So not that I want somebody to force somebody to lose, but at the same time, the nature of life is there are people who are in that top 5% and there are people that are not. And some people do extremely well and just don't quite make it in the 5%. And some of that is a little bit like a sports analogy. You do your very best and sometimes you don't come out ahead. And I think there are wonderful lessons in life that can be learned in that. So I'm a fan of the 5% and the 10% of just, you know, if I'm in that 5%, I am in the top tier and I worked really hard to get there. And other people did really, really well and scored a certain score, but they didn't make it in the top 5% and that's just part of it. So I'm a fan of, you know, some of that competition aspect because I think life works that way. And the other thing, looks like Sophia has her mic on because I was curious, as a senior who had a really high GPA and did really well in school, I was curious if you wanted to offer your opinion on it.
Yeah, I was actually going to say, I do kind of have an issue with no longer identifying valedictorians or salutatorians. I don't know if you all know, but a lot of colleges offer scholarships if you're named as one of the two. Because I remember looking at colleges, maybe early my junior year, and Liberty University, just to name an example, gives you a full tuition scholarship if you get named either of them. So you're probably giving up a lot of money for some people potentially if you remove this. And on top of that, to brag on halls, our top 10% cutoff was 4.3 something, 4.3 like 2 maybe. And a lot of my good friends who worked super hard, took all the AP classes, just missed it by a hundredth of a point and they were really crushed by that. And I just, I understand that there has to be a cutoff, but it really did kind of bother them that they did not get any recognition because both of them had over 30 on the ACT, but they just couldn't get in the top 10% by a hundredth of a point. So I do think that this is a little different. But that was just my thoughts on it.
I appreciate that perspective. Thank you. Kat, Ms. Spine?
Thank you. Just have a couple of questions. Is there, you know, well, first I was going to ask, do we have any sort of recognition for students, all students that make over a 4.0? But then it sounds like we do not. And so I'm curious if that's something that we've considered doing or thought about doing just as kind of like a blanket if you have a 4.0 or above?
To my knowledge, it's not something that's been proposed.
Is that something that other districts do?
Again, I'm not aware of it if that is the case, but I haven't done any research on that either, so. I would say that it would include such a large number of students for us just based on the opportunities that are out there. That, again, not a bad thing, but that would be a recognition for quite a few of our graduates.
Is there a way at some point to know, like, for the last three years, like, how many students that would be?
We could definitely get that. Again, as the Principles Association went through that, they examined GPA distributions of the graduates for the last several years, looking at where possible cuts and scores and things like that would fall if they were to use different, you know, cuts for these different designations. So that data is available. They have that, and that could be something we could pull forward.
It'd be good to know. And then, do we have any high schools where students do not score a 4.0?
I believe we have a graduate in every school every year that's above a 4.0. Again, but the way that the catalog for the state has expanded to include AP offerings, some school, we have one school, IB offerings, our industry certifications, even honors courses will offer extra points for the student in that regard.
Is there a benefit for Knox County schools? Like, can you, or could you kind of like quickly quantify, recap it? I know we talked about this in policy review, but what the benefits are for moving to this percentage rather than keeping with what we're doing right now?
Sure. So again, as I think Dr. Butler asked when we were in the presentation last time, or I'm sorry, at the policy review meeting, the proposal that's been brought has been brought by the High School Principals Association, supported unanimously by our high school principals. And again, to recap, this is work that they began prior to 2020, before the COVID incident. And kind of, school became about something else for a little while for us. But that was work that they were proposing and bringing forward at that time. We've had high school principles changed since then and has continued to be unanimously supported by them. And the two factors that I would say are represented in the proposal is, one, the desire to recognize more students at our schools for the academic accomplishments that they've had. And we've heard that here characterized already. We always have kids that have done above and beyond. And the current system with the valedictorian and salutatorian technically only recognizes two students a year in that graduating class while there are many more that could be recognized. So that's one, the expansion of who we recognize. The second one would be, and again, I would say, I'm speaking on behalf of those principals, but I think a pattern of negative behaviors and things that have potentially come out of the pursuit sometimes of the valedictorian and salutatorian recognition that can begin even as early as middle school with students making decisions driven more by, how can I get the highest GPA possible? And not necessarily by what's best for me as a student, what classes would matter most and support me best. And I think that's played out in a lot of ways in the high school environment, including sometimes the end of friendships and family dynamics that have been toxic at times. And I think they are looking for a solution that best supports their students and best supports more students in being recognized for the academic work that they've done.
And that, principals, for the principals, is that every single high school principal?
That is my understanding. Again, and since the public was not a part of that, for our presentation on that at two different times, our high school association president and vice president have come representing those principals.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. Ms. Templeton?
Yeah. I had a question about the idea of the percentages. I'm not sure, the point that I'm trying to make, truthfully, because it's a moving goal by school. So the 5% at one school is not the same goal as it is at another school. Whether or not that is good or bad remains to be determined by this group. But I'm not sure, when we talk about the competition factor and not necessarily knowing what your goal is to get there is somewhat concerning for the kids in the process, right? Like, well, I know that if I want this designation, I have to get to a 4.5, let's say. Whereas that would not be true at other schools. But then I'm also thinking back to Ms. Christie's real lived experience with kids transferring schools for the sake of getting the name and the badge. Feels disingenuous and feels just icky. I mean, that's not a... But so I'm questioning, and I'm hoping that you can clarify and maybe sway me one way or the other because I don't know this whole, this moving finish line, the pro and the con on the moving finish line.
Again, I will say, the original proposal brought by the principals had GPA distributions. But with that being said, in order to set those GPA distributions in a way that would ensure, based on historic, where the GPAs for the graduating class are, to ensure that we have every high school with representation, it created quite a different distribution in terms of, not that this doesn't create a different distribution, but a drastic difference in terms of, how many students would we recognize, for example, at a Farragut High School on graduation if we set a GPA metric versus how many students would we recognize at a Fulton High School? Percentages at least, in doing that, create a quantifiable, more predictable, you know, the graduating class for any high school is fairly consistent year to year. You know where, kind of, what you'd be recognizing in terms of those percentages. The high schools, principals, last time they spoke to us as well said that that 10% cut line aligns with a lot of the traditions and a lot of those things that they already do at the high school level. And so it makes sense in terms of where they typically are recognizing and, you know, calling out student performance and those sorts of things as well. So those are the two, I would say, factors I remember from their discussion. And again, I'll say, after the first proposal, before bringing it back, that difference in GPA distribution that it causes was a point of conversation Mr. Dupler and I had quite a bit of conversation about in terms of potentially coming back with a percentage cut as an option. So I don't know if you've got additional on that, Gary, or not that you'd add.
Sorry, my list. Oh, Sophia, you were next. Lights are coming on and I'm making my list.
I just had a question from a lot of, like, students have wondered this. I actually have wondered it too. But the NIC certifications, do you know why they are weighted as much as an AP class? In my personal opinion, I've taken both. Both are hard, but AP is just incredibly harder than the NIC certification. I could understand it being weighted as much as honors, but it being weighted five points is a question a lot of people have had.
Absolutely. So Sophia's asked a question about NIC courses. Those are state courses that are aligned to industry certifications, typically, obviously, in the career and technical education field. State law changed a few years ago. That's all guided by the uniform grading policy. And so that's a policy that changes a lot. But that was one a few years ago that got updated to recognize students who are maybe more on that career track and pursuing those industry certifications were recognized for that achievement.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Christie?
I just had a clarifying question. Dr. Wilson, did you, just to make sure I understood correctly, at policy review, when we were talking, just to speak a little bit to Sophia's concern about the scholarships, did I understand that the school counselor can still give a student their ranking, whether it was one or two, so that they could still apply for those scholarships?
That's correct. My understanding is, as a university were to reach out requesting information around class ranking, that that can be provided. Now, I would say too, in the research done by our high school principals in terms of like the title of valedictorian carrying a weight when it came to scholarships and things like that, they did not find that that was a factor. However, if there is a university that would say the top student in their graduating class is eligible for that scholarship, that would be something that could still be provided by the school.
Okay. And neighboring districts, I know, I believe Miraval, has Oak Ridge went to this as well?
Yeah.
So that might be how they...
There are multiple surrounding districts that have moved to...
So that might be how they do that with their students for those scholarships.
Correct.
Okay, just one double check. All right. Oh, Ms. Fontana Ridley?
Thank you. I just had a question on a different policy.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I don't think there's anything else on this one, so. Right? Okay, yeah.
Okay. On I-440, and again, this is...
Okay, so J.
Oh, was it J?
Oh, no, I mean, it's letter J. Is that what you're talking about? Policy I-440, though?
Yes.
The wellness policy?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
On line 30, emphasizing the term unstructured play outside, is there any way that we can put in there a phrase to make it part of policy that specified physical activity cannot be given as a punishment? So instead of saying something like withheld from or given to a student as punishment, such as walking laps or push-ups or...
I can chime in if that's helpful.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I do just want to ask, Ms. Fontana Ridley, if you look on page 1, line 32, where it says, "Physical activity shall not be withheld from a student as punishment", do you feel like that's sufficient? I'm sorry, I said page 1. Page 3.
I don't think it should be withheld, but I also don't think it should be given.
Oh, given as punishment?
Yeah, I know that sometimes teachers have their kids walk five laps or whatever as punishment for behavior in the classroom. And, I mean, both of them can exist at the same time. You know what I mean?
I misunderstood your question. I know what you mean now, yes.
Okay, thank you. I was just asking that question if that could be part of that policy.
Yeah. I think if you brought, I mean, if you want to make an amendment to it on Thursday, you want to bring that as a motion to add that on? Or I think that would be, we could vote on that.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Any more questions about that policy? Or I think we got through that whole alphabet of policies. All right. Okay, moving on then to grants. 8A or B? Oh, Ms. Himmelgarn?
Madam Chair, on item 8A, the attachment is correct and then the information in the board update is correct. But I did not catch this before publishing and have asked Ms. Coteany to adjust the total dollar amount in the caption. It only includes one of those grants.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you for clarifying that. All right. C or D under grants? All right, or E? All right, moving on to contracts. A or B? Or C? Moving on then to regular agenda items. A or B? Yeah, Ms. Templeton? Yeah?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Dupler, because I have not combed through this yet, if there are any market changes to this than the one that is in existence currently?
It's a good question.
It is a good question. Thank you, Ms. Templeton. The, so Emerald Academy Council and I had been working on this. We'd been going back and forth for a little while on this now. And we were just able to reach an agreement today. So that's why you haven't had this before. But the answer to the question, I think, is at least reassuring in that KCS wanted to make some updates to the existing agreement and Emerald wanted to make a few updates to the existing agreement. But I can say that the original agreement with Emerald still exists within this renewal. And the updates are all to the effect of, you know, new laws that have come about in the 10 to 11 years since Emerald started and new policies and procedures that have come about through the Tennessee Commission, State Board of Education, and Tennessee Department of Education. So that's what all of our focus has been for a couple of months now. So there's nothing that I would term, you know, earthshaking or any radical changes to the way we do business with Emerald. It is all updates, which the Tennessee Commission communicated with, I know Teresa Nixon on that, and that was their message too, since this board has already approved the application of Emerald, that the agreement needed to focus on just whatever updates are necessary to put it into compliance with current law... are necessary to put it into compliance with, with current law, rules, regulations, et cetera. That's it.
So all changes are legal changes, as determined by the legislature?
I think that's largely fair to say, yes. There, I mean, there's also some, some changes that Emerald wanted pursuant to their application, right? Their application is, you know, now going forward after already been, been in existence for 10 years, so, so the changes, some of the, and, and we're not talking about a lot, but some of the changes they wanted were just pursuant to the application that they filed for the renewal. So it's not, it's not anything different than you've seen in the application.
Okay, okay. Great, thank you. Great clarification, thank you for that. Anybody else on regular agenda items? All right, moving on then to public forum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have one. Ms. Hancock, if you will state your name and county of residence, I think we know who you are, but for the record, and, and you'll have three minutes.
Take care of this. Madam Chair, Betsy Henderson, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. John Roswick. I'm standing before you this evening to announce two important pieces of news regarding the leadership of the Knox County Education Association. First, I want to express my sincere gratitude to the members of the Knox County Schools, Board of Education, and Superintendent Dr. John Roswick for their leadership during my tenure as President of the Knox County Education Association. Due to our collaborative efforts, together we have been instrumental in accomplishing key achievements and contributions that have led to more effective communications among stakeholders and increased student success. However, I say with mixed emotions that as of June 30th, I will no longer be an employee of the Knox County School District. Second, I'm thrilled to introduce Daria Turner as the new President of the Knox County Education Association, effective July 1st, 2025. Daria has been an educator for Knox County Schools and is an active member of the Knox County Education Association, having served on the KCA Executive Board, KCA Pecatine, and as well as the TEA Board of Directors. She brings a wealth of experience as an educator, and we are confident that she will be an asset in the relationship that has been formed between us. We look forward to a smooth transition and welcome your support of Daria as she gets settled into her new role. I am excited about the opportunities that lie ahead for both of our organizations and believe that this leadership change will benefit us greatly. Thank you, Daria Turner.
Thank you, Ms. Hancock, for all of your hard work and commitment. We appreciate you. All right, moving on to board forum. Sophia?
I, I just wanted to thank everyone for my time on the board. There's really nothing I can say bad about it, except for it deterred me from political science, but everyone has been so kind, and it has been amazing to just sit and learn from you all and be able to advocate out in my community when people are like, so how's the board thing going? And I'm like, oh, everyone's really great, they're all really nice, they all really care about the kids. It's been a real honor to be able to do that. As a student rep, I just wanted to speak for a few reminders. Students, please have a nice, great summer vacation, relax or restore yourself. AP scores come out July 2nd, so definitely check those, and if you haven't sent them free to a college, do it by the end of June, because I had to pay $20 to send mine. And then Tennessee Promise Hours are also due by the end of June. So that is something I would get in as well. And something that I kind of learned about the second semester of my senior year, is there a way we can get high schools to tell students that sometimes the dual enrollment grant does not cover the entire class? Because multiple of my friends, multiple of my friends, including myself, we owed like $300 to the universities at the end, and we had no idea, and they withheld our transcripts from other colleges because we hadn't paid. So I think finding a way to bridge that gap and communicate to students that, oh, sometimes you'll still owe extra money would be really beneficial. Thanks.
That's good to know. We're going to miss your insight, Sophia. I learned so much. I have a high schooler, and I learn from you because he's so quiet. Reverend Butler?
Yes, and I'm going to ask for some patience. We had our annual conference this week, past week, starting on Wednesday and ending on Saturday. This is the Methodist Conference, Amy African Methodist Episcopal Zion Church, and that's when I, our assignments and appointments are made. This year, effective on May 31st, I have been appointed to be the Presiding Elder of the Concord District, West Central North Carolina Conference, Piedmont Episcopal District, and that is in North Carolina. I'll be a four-time Presiding Elder overseeing 20 churches. I will be the pastor of Clinton Chapel and Musian Church here in Knoxville, and Presiding Elder of the Knoxville District through June 30th, and then a new pastor and Presiding Elder will be appointed. I plan to maintain my residence here in Knoxville, so to continue to serve out my duties as Knox County School Board of Education District One Representative, and to continue to do the things I need to do to make sure the district is represented and the schools are taken care of, as well as all the schools in Knox County. And also, I will be, I have an office in, in Concord, North Carolina, and I'll be in that office doing those duties when I need to. So I believe I can do both, and if there is a time when either fails, then I'll take the steps to make sure that someone else can do one or the other. But at this time, I just wanted to make sure the board knew and the community knew that I will be doing something different for the Amysion Church, but I'll still be here doing the same thing for Knox County Schools. Thank you.
Congratulations on that new honor, and your thoughtful leadership, too. Ms. Templeton?
That's fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's really wonderful. And congratulations, Sophia, again. I have nothing to be congratulated for, because they are carrying the full weight of that this month, and it is an honor to sit next to both of you, as we do this every month. So I just want to wish everyone a wonderful summer. We've started it, I know that a lot of vacations have actually already taken place, Sophia's already been to the beach and back. So that's exciting, and yeah, just looking forward to a great summer.
I'm in. Ms. Fonten Ridley?
Thank you. I also congratulate Sophia. Well done. Oftentimes, I felt like she'd been on the board for longer than me, but she seemed to kind of know how to kind of feel her way, and I'm still trying. So congratulations, Sophia. You've got a really bright future ahead of you. And Reverend Dr. Butler, congratulations on your new position, and I hope you find a lot of joy in it.
That's about it. Mr. Triplett?
Yeah, well done, Sophia. Good to have a halls representative. I love it, having a red devil in there, it's good to have. You do have such poise on this board, I'm so very impressed, and excited to see what happens to UT and beyond, so, well done.
Yep. Ms. Pike?
Thank you. Congratulations again to all the graduates of Knox County Schools. It was so amazing to be at the graduations that I attended, and, you know, each year you think like, oh, it's shaking more hands, and you'll, you'll, you get used to it, but I think this is my third year going to graduations, and it was still pretty emotional and pretty amazing to see the, the next generations really getting out in there and being so excited and what they're prepared to do. I'm, it just, it really makes me excited for the job that I'm doing here, but also for our future. Congratulations to Sophia, and it's been a joy having you here, and again, can't believe that the year is gone already, but I'm excited for our next board rep. And then also want to shift over to say, and wish everyone a happy Pride Month, and to also wish everyone a happy Juneteenth. I know that those things aren't necessarily based on happiness, but I hope that we can each celebrate in our own way to find joy in some misfortunes that have come before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pike. Ms. Morgan?
Thank you. Congratulations, Sophia. You have, as Ms. Fonten Ridley said, a very bright future ahead of you, and it's been a pleasure to work with you. My, is, my board update forum is all about congratulations as well. Congratulations to Farragut High School Track and Field for being the 2025 boys' state champions. Great feat for them. And, yes, to Farragut High School Baseball on their recent, very recent win of the state championship, again, for the fourth year in a row. They are, over the last four years, 16-0 in state tournaments, so four consecutive state championships for the ads. Very proud of that. Way to go, Admirals, and I hope everyone has a wonderful summer.
It's impressive. Mr. Wright?
One more time, congratulations, Sophia. You're, you're going to love UT, and you're going to do well there. Thank you for your service to the board. Congratulations, Reverend Butler also. That's pretty cool. Also, I want to throw out congratulations to the Gibbs High softball team for their back-to-back state championship, Division One, 3A. That makes them the 12-time state champions in girls' softball.
Ooh. Ms. Christie?
Again, so Sophia, I still expect you to text me so we can do congratulations later, okay? Give me, give me your life update. Reverend Dr. Butler, you gave me a brief moment of panic over here when you started that, I'm going to say, I was like-
I know, my eyes were like, where's he going with this?
When you said June, I really started to panic. I was like, where are we going with this? But congratulations on that. Ms. Hancock, congratulations on your retirement. Welcome, Ms. Turner. And sadly, our softball soccer team fell one game short, but we're still immensely proud of them. And I would also like to give a shout out for Emerald Youth for helping us get them to state again this year, because transportation is something we struggle with sometimes, and our friends at Emerald are always are willing to step in and help with that, so give them a shout out as well.
I echo all the congratulations, Sophia. Thank you for your service to the board. You truly are a bright light on this board, and we're going to miss you. And I just want to congratulate Harden Valley Academy Boys Soccer Team, One State, so I'm excited about that. And last night, we had 500 kids, Knox County students returned from a week in Colorado at Young Life Camp. My son was included in that group, so I'm sure they're all still asleep after a 30-hour bus ride back from Colorado, but I'm excited for those kids to have that experience, and also a big thanks to all the chaperones for watching 500 children. So with that, I'll see y'all Thursday, and we are adjourned.